Yeah.
It was just tired.
Okay, we're ready to roll.
Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County of Cochise and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty at seven PM via Zoom. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joanie Giacominno.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
You're muted.
Mayor Pro Tem Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joel Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you, and I see that we have a couple guests. Welcome guests. For our moment of silence, I'd like us to reflect on the fact that elections are over nationally and locally. And it's time for all of us to quit the divisiveness and come together, both as a community and as a nation, and move on from here, taking the passions that we had during election time and putting them to good use and coming together. So if you join me for just a moment of silence. Thank you. I, under the mayor, we have no proclamation tonight. And I don't believe that we have any announcements that need to be brought up right now. And with that, we will go to call to the public. Ms. Landers.
Thank you. For right now, I'm just acknowledging receipt of a citizen petition regarding allowing the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter to continue running the Bisbee Animal Shelter until the new mayor and council are seated on December first and can provide a long-term solution with input for the community.
Thank you. The petition is accepted. It will be acted on pursuant to the city charter within the next three meetings. Accounts payable. Do we have a motion on accounts payable?
Pay accounts payable.
You and Joanie are obviously together. You're two, two co-lets.
Actually, we're not. Are you muted? Okay. Okay, let somebody else do it.
All right. Do we have a motion on accounts payable?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
I'll second that. Thank you. Do we have questions on accounts payable?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Ms. Johnson.
On page, where the heck did it go? Page six. Oh, wait. Maybe I'm lying. Yeah, on page six for now. Um, where the heck is that? Oh, I've lost it. Uh-oh, I bumped the wrong, oh, at the very bottom where it says parks. I'm just curious why it's eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Sure. Yes, in the last month or so, we've had to do some repairs to Ione Street. What we did there is we put down some millings and we watered to make sure that we've got a good compaction on that. In addition, we've had a number of sewer line clogs that we've had to use our, our backer truck to jet those lines out. Once, one line more than once this in the past month. So we've definitely had to use that to fill our water trucks and our backer trucks.
My other question has to do with on page eleven. And let me find it, ten. It's actually under sanitation fund, under recycling, where you have the gas reimbursement. I guess that's what that is for Wex Bank. How on earth does one person get over six hundred dollars?
I can't, I didn't understand your question, Ms. Giacominno.
Okay, on page eleven, at the very top.
Yeah.
Um, there is a, two refunds. I'm guessing what those are are reimbursements, I should say. And one is for two hundred and sixty-five, sixty-two, and the other is for three fifty-two. And
I, I see those, Ms. Giacominno. Those are not reimbursements. Those are, those are our actual fuel cards that are each vehicle has. Those are sanitation or trash trucks. And so
Okay, so why is that one so much higher than everybody else?
There are two different vehicles, Mr. Moody fueled. Those are trash trucks. Those, that's what they cost to fuel those vehicles.
So are you just mainly using just those two because the other charges don't seem that high? That was the question.
Um, the other vehicles here, um, I don't, I can't tell you specifically what vehicles those are without having go into the actual program. Mr. Moody is driving an actual trash truck. Mr. Martinez and Mr. Gestelum do not drive trash trucks on a regular basis. Now, they may, because those are in the sanitation, they may have been filling in for another sanitation driver. And so when they need to fuel, this is why, this is one reason why we went with fuel cars is when they punch in their PIN number, we know which person in, whether it's works, a firefighter, a police officer, whether it's the city manager, we know who fills it up. So those very well may be the same vehicle, but I would have to go into double check to see that. But what we're seeing is Mr. Moody filled two different trucks. And then Mr. Martinez and Mr. Gestelum filled a truck. I don't know specifically right now which vehicle they filled. But those are the sanitation truck. Not a reimbursement.
Okay.
Anything else? Any other question? Is that a hand up, Ms. Giacominno? No. Okay. All those in favor of paying accounts payable signify by stating aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Moving on to approval of the consent agenda. There's a single item, item A. Approval of the resignation of William McNabb from the Police and Fire Advisory Committee. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, item A.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second for Ms. Johns.
Second.
Or somebody. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Pollak. Councilmember Giacominno. Councilmember Higgins. Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, the motion passes apparently about eighty-three to nothing. Uh, we're getting a real good, real good echo there, Ms. Klein. Before we go to, we have no old business. Before we go to new business, Ms. Coronado, I was trying to ask both you and Ms. Landers. When we go into, when we end this meeting and go into executive session, everybody out there needs to sign out. But if they sign back in, will it not just hold until we reconvene?
Since I am the admin of the meeting, I'm gonna try to reassign it right now when I, when we start to log off this meeting. So Joel can hold the meeting for the attendees. Otherwise, we're gonna have to shut it down and lose everyone, and they're just gonna kind of have to keep poking back in to see if we've started back up again. It just kind of makes it hard.
Okay, I was just saying that sometimes if I go to the meeting early, it indicates that the meeting hasn't started yet and waiting to, we'll let you in when it starts.
And it may do that. I just don't know if it's gonna boot them out once I stop the meeting. I don't know.
Okay, so the, the idea folks out there is that when we go into executive session, you're gonna need to sign out and then sign back in.
You all should have the executive session link to attend.
And then the rest of us attending the executive session just immediately sign into the executive session. And with that, do we have a motion to, for items three to go into executive session?
I move we go into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with the City Attorney, attorney to provide legal guidance on pending matters, claims, and contract use slash procurement.
Thank you. I'll second that.
I have a question before we take a vote.
Yes, Ms. Johns.
Um, are we going to be discussing anything about agenda items nine, ten, or eleven in executive session?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by stating aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
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 I have three to four. Is that wrong?
I think. I think that's correct, but I don't, I'm no, no for sure.
I got a, I got a name from Ms. Giacominno, Ms. Johns, and Mr. Hick.
Is that correct? Okay, I don't see anything otherwise. So yes, four to three.
All right. Thank you. We are in executive session.
All right. So hang on, Joel. I'm gonna try to just leave it. I can leave the meeting, so I'm gonna see if it will allow you to hang on, okay?
Okay, I won't log out.
And I'm assigning it to you.
And then it's still live on Facebook.
Correct, and it will just be a blank screen.
Okay. Okay.
So you can turn, you can, or you can turn your camera off.
We need to go to the link for the
Okay, looks like it worked. Well, he's gone, Ashley's gone, and you're still there.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready to go.
I move that we come out of the executive session.
Second.
Okay. All right, Mayor, can you hear us?
Hmm.
No, hold on just a moment.
He doesn't have a microphone. All of us have microphones except him.
Yeah. Um, I don't know what Jim's fix was last time.
I think he's doing it right now.
Okay.
All right, can I be heard now?
Yes.
Great.
So we have
Yes?
We have a first and a second. Bill Higgins moved to come out, and it was seconded by Lou.
Okay. All those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. I believe it's unanimous. Sorry, we had a little bit of confusion apparently. Some of our more mature adults in Bisbee are deciding to demonstrate outside my house right now. And so we, I certainly appreciate the attention and the maturity. So with that, item number four, discussion of possible action on notice of claim with slutter. Do we have any councilman that wish to discuss this matter? Otherwise, there will be no action. Item five, discussion of possible approval of amendment number two to the Jacobs Agreement for Operations, Maintenance and Management Services for the City of Bisbee San Jose Wastewater Treatment Plant, Mr. Haro.
Apologize that I get myself off you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This agenda item is for the Second Amendment to the operations and maintenance contract with Jacobs. Um, I, they have only applied the base fee escalation per the original agreement. Do have Chris Baines here with us, with us this evening, along with Ron Jacobson. They have prepared a brief presentation to you all for the past year's operation and maintenance.
Hi, Chris. Welcome, sir. You have, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you. Issues for the introduction. I'm not normally a Zoom user. I'm a Microsoft team, so I will bear with me as I choose over these selections down here, but Ron, are you unmuted in case you want to chime in?
Yeah, I'm here, Chris.
Hell, yeah.
Okay, great. And can everybody see the slide right now?
No.
Not yet.
Okay, it might take a minute. Let's see here. Let's see here. Okay, let me try this again.
Need technology, Grant.
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay, here we go. Entire screen application window. I think that's what I want.
There you go.
There you go. All right. Well, thank you for having us this evening. What I'd like to do is Ron and I would like to kind of recap twenty twenty. Not like, not that we all want to go back into twenty twenty. You know, it's, it's been a tough and challenging year for, for everyone. And by seeing that we're all part of a, an essential service, we must press on and, and, and sustain operations and meet our obligation to serve you diligently. So with that, little bit about the agenda here, we always start out in Jacobs and, you know, with internal meetings or client meetings with a safety discussion. And, and then some of that leads into a culture of caring. And then I like to talk a little bit about our, about our team, some of the new add-ons to our regional and local. And then discuss some of the improvements we've made over the past, this past year, which helped drove performance and compliance, improvements in compliance, as well as, you know, how we leveraged some of our regional support. Culture of care, or, yeah, a little bit about our safety culture here. So since we've started at Bisbee, we've had logged over seventeen thousand work hours with no recordables. Knock on wood, if we meet no recordables as of January one, twenty twenty-one, that's a two-year perfect record for us. And a lot of that has to do with our staff preparing daily pre-task plans before they start their tasks. Before they do a maintenance repair, before they do a lab, before they do a walk around, we prepare, we put together pre-task plans. And we sit down and discuss the, the plan of action and how to do a job safely. This past year, we've done over four hundred and forty-five pre-task plans. And we contribute a lot of that support with our region, regional and local personnel at each project throughout the Midwest and at Bisbee, or Midwest, Southwest, I'm from the Midwest. Southwest, we have a designated health and safety champion who helps drive that, that, that culture. And with that, we, we bring to the project from, from the region and from Jacobs as a whole specialized training for our crew at the project, anything from art class to diversity and inclusion, Smith driving, BACO operation. So we have quite a bit of training, and these are some of the specialized training that we provide at each project. About culture of caring, so when the COVID nineteen news came out in, in February and things picked up in March, you know, we're part of the essential service. So we had to do what we needed to do to, to keep our work family safe and as well as go home safely, so that their family remains safe and healthy. Some of those things that we did, immediately we prepared a continuity of operations plan at each project. And that laid out kind of like the guidelines of how to keep each other safe, whether it's the six-foot distance, mask-wearing, segregating workspaces, implementing daily temperature testing. And we also provided PTO to help for quarantine employees in case they come down with a high fever until test results were returned. We also identified a regional warehouse to provide supplies in, in case there was shortages. And we all saw some of those shortages come about. Pima, we, we, we had a warehouse for all of Arizona projects, whether it's, you know, masks or food supplies or hand sanitizer, things like that. So we would not be short of the necessities to keep our employees safe and working. In the Southwest alone, in March, we, we immediately implemented a task team to come up with twenty-six hundred masks. And that was five masks per each of our two hundred and sixty work members in the Southwest. My wife, my wife was one of those, you know, working on and sewing up a bunch of masks. And we handed those out to our employees and spouses and to visitors that came on to the projects. Little diving into a little bit about the project. This past year, we've added some key staff members to help with the service and delivery of operations. Leonard Valdez, he's a, he's local to Bisbee. He has a maintenance background. In lieu of hiring a, an operator, we leaned more on the maintenance side. He brings a lot of skills and has done a lot of work for us since he's come on board in the last three or four months. Mike Taron brings some institutional knowledge to the, to the Bisbee facility. And he's getting trained up on, you know, how we perform compliance in Jacobs, weekly process meeting minutes, HACWIMs. So Ron is doing a great job of leading and, and training these gentlemen to, to be part of the team and family. We added David Teague. He's a regional site safety professional now out of Prescott Valley, Arizona. He supports our Arizona projects now. Normally, we would have one person supporting fourteen projects out of New Mexico, but we found a need as we grow and safety is of our utmost importance to us. We added this person to David, to Prescott Valley, who is, you know, down the road from Bisbee. And he's providing training to those team members in Bisbee. We added a regional technical support person, David Sanford. He has thirty years' experience in wastewater knowledge and training and supervision. He's, he's helped augmenting a position right now in Prescott Valley, but he's at our beck and call as we need him for, you know, getting any kind of process challenges taken care of. Some of the major facility improvements over the last year, which all drive for better reliability of the, the treatment plant as a whole. And, and earlier this year, you know, we got approval to replace the UV equipment and HMI outdated equipment and, and human machine interface for the UV, for the UV system. It was running a manual one hundred percent, which reduces the life of those bogs significantly by running one hundred percent plus just an energy hog. So over time, there's, there's be a return on that investment that you've made. And we overseen those contractors install those and make sure they're one hundred percent functional, functional before they left. They did have to return a couple more times because Ron, you know, saw kind of some defaults in their installs, but they stepped up and took care of those. I'm not gonna read all of these. You can see them on the screen. I tell you some, a couple other major things that happened, though. There was a fiber optics communications line installed throughout the facility. And for the first time since the facility's ever been in operation, we can see the headworks equipment and, and see that all that equipment up there in the headworks is active and functioning. And we get alarms now to, to alert us if there's a problem in the headworks. Another major upgrade was your SCADA. This started, this SCADA upgrade started back in March. And I can tell you that, you know, this is one of the biggest challenges Ron ran through this year. It, it, it required lots and lots of overtime on our part, but it was our duty to see that you get what you're paid for. So Ron stuck with it and the team stuck with it. You know, alarm after alarm after alarm after alarm in the midnight hours, you know. They came out there and addressed it and make sure there were no upsets, even though they may be false alarms. So kudos to those guys stepping up to the plate there and seeing that you, you get, you know, what you paid for on that SCADA system. And then you can see some of these other lists of equipments that were done. Eight out of the ten SBR duration racks were replaced with new diffusers. And, and what we're hoping to see out of that is improved blower efficiency and reduce electrical cost to sustain the proper DO in those tanks. As they remove those racks, there was just, some of those racks were just solid grit. They're, they're They're, they're basically just piping that you blow air through. And that piping was, most of those pipings were full of grit and debris. So those, those blowers were working extra hard to push that air through. So hopefully we should see some, um, uh, power savings there. And I know Ashley has been sending us some, um, you know, local records so that we can get that loaded up into HAC WINS and hopefully see a trend there, so. And as we, you know, make major repairs and improvements to the plant, um, it only leads to in, in increased performance and compliance. Um, since we've started, we've successfully passed, successfully passed the whole F, F one toxicity or wet testing. Um, and that was a challenge when we, when we came into the project. But, um, these guys, you know, and it's not just the repairs made, but these guys, they, they take down these tanks, they scrub them, they clean them, um, and, and make sure we're getting the best quality of water coming out. And as you can see from the photo, that's a point three four NTU, which is kind of, it measures turbidity. Typically, um, water quality standard is, uh, less than one. So, um, having a point three four, um, NTU wastewater going out is pretty, pretty good water. And obviously we'll have effective evolvent treatment, um, and equipment that can, um, uh, reliably sustain heavy rainfall events. And then recently, we've had, uh, two ADQ inspections that, um, Ron worked successfully with. And, um, you know, we, we passed and, and, uh, successfully, you know, with ADQ. So Ron has done a good job, he has a good relationship with ADQ. Uh, a little bit, uh, going a bit of higher level, um, you know, these are some of the resources that we have in our region that at our fingertips, at your fingertips, if you need support, if it's a, if a, if it's a citywide asset management program, GIS, SCADA, security, compliance, sustainability, um, all options, all those things that are at our fingertips and, and yours as well, and, and, and as you need. Um, we did add one group to our Southwest and they're called Integrated Utility Solutions. And I had the pleasure of working with them on a condition assessment for a, uh, Arizona State Park. So they provide local, um, kind of a efficiency, like contracting type level of support, uh, for our projects. Lastly, um, you know, we always try and ping out to our, to our local projects to help other projects. And we did get a lot of support from Pima County, uh, the Agua Nueva facility, a project that we operate. Um, we had some staff come out from that project and help with, uh, replacement of some, uh, belt press roller bearings, uh, pump installs, inspections, uh, welding of the city sludge container, and install some bypassing for sludge operations. As well as, um, a, a quick kind of a two-day, um, uh, oh, uh, GIS-type geospatial, um, and, um, mapping of four manholes down the treatment plant. Just to give you an idea of what, what we can, um, do with that. The photo to the very right are the four manholes leading up to the treatment plant. Um, it gives you the elevations and you can add anything in there that you want to, would like to. You click on more info and that can send you to, um, videos. Um, one thing it can send you to is the green and black image that you see. That's actually a light dark image of, um, manhole of number four. Um, and it can show you, you can see the inlet pipe, the outlet pipe, the cone and, and the top of the surface there. Um, so what that does for you is see if there's any leaks or deterioration in that manhole without actually physically getting into it. So this is some thing that we offer and, 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 and can do for our, our local projects. And then with that, um, Ron and I be, be to take any questions and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any questions, Councilor? Was that you, Mr. Pollak?
No, I have no question.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, let me stop sharing, I guess. I'd be nice to see me, uh.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions of Chris are welcome. Hearing that, do we have a motion in reference to the item number, uh, five?
Somehow I've.
What, what was that, Mr. Egan? Is anyone else having trouble? I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you, sir.
I couldn't hear him either.
Well.
Approve amendment number two to the Jacobs Agreement for Operations, Maintenance and Management Services.
Nice second.
Second.
Thank you. Any, any questions, comments? Hearing that, Ms. Cornado?
Councilmember Pollak?
Hi.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
I am, am not back on the meeting for some reason, uh, and, uh, I can hear, but I.
I can see ya.
We can hear you, sir.
See me and hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Anybody and hear them. Uh, and I don't know how to get back to where I can see and hear you, I have no idea. Uh, anyhow, I'll vote aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes five to two. Uh, thank you, uh, Ron and, uh, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Item number six, discussion of possible approval to accept a grant from the Department of Emergency Affairs from the City of Bisbee, fire suppression system, Ms. Coleman.
Goodness. Hi, thank you. Um, so our volunteer grant writer, uh, Danielle Boucha Bay, uh, worked very hard, uh, to submit this grant through the DEMA, um, grant process. And we were awarded, um, for this project. Um, the, um, we didn't have to get approval to write the grant because there is no cost to the city for this grant. Uh, it's a cost share with APS, no, Arizona Water Company, sorry, um, Arizona Water Company. And then also, um, uh, the Bouches are making a personal gift, um, that I'm sure we'll have to receive it sometime in the future. The reason this is coming to you is because it also includes, uh, work performed by our engineering firm, um, WLB Group, uh, for ninety thousand dollars. That is covered, um, by the grant. And WLB Group was already selected in a previous, um, RFP selection process. Um, so really, this is a stamp of approval to move forward with the grant and the agreement with WLB Group.
Right, and I, and I might add if I might, that, uh, this, uh, this is a big deal. Because with this, uh, grant, uh, it opens up the, uh, road for us to receive a huge multimillion-dollar grant for the upgrade of the entire fire suppression system in downtown for old Bisbee, four to one. So, uh, this is, like I said, a, a huge deal and thanks to, uh, Danielle Boucha Bay and to the Bouches. And, uh, Arizona Water has been a, a great, uh, partner in this. So, uh, with that, uh, do we have a motion?
I move, I move to accept the grant from DEMA for the City of Bisbee Fire Suppression System.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Higgins had a second. Now, any comments? All right, uh, Ms. Cornado, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval for Blue Revolver Inc. to place a holiday installation on Main Street. Uh, I received, uh, communications, uh, part of which I passed on to all of you. Uh, you should have today received, uh, a follow-up, um, hi Brooke, uh, which, uh, indicates, uh, what it, uh, uh, a, kind of what it might look like, not, not an exact. Um, but the important thing is, is, uh, uh, for, uh, our downtown area, uh, it's not costing us a penny, they're putting it up, they're taking it down. Uh, and, uh, I personally think it'd be a, a wonderful thing for the City of Bisbee and, uh, raise some morale and Christmas cheer in this time that's been pretty, uh, pretty hectic and dramatic for us with COVID, et cetera. Uh, it is, um, um, there is a corporate, uh, sponsor behind it, uh, which, uh, we, we, we know, uh, has been provided to us. And that does include, I believe, two logos, one on each, uh, end of the installation. Uh, and, uh, having said that, uh, I'll open it up for, uh, discussion or any questions. Ms. Johns?
Sure, thank you so much. So we know that the corporate sponsor is Netflix. And my question is, is this going to be advertisements for Netflix shows on our streets?
Second, hi everyone, my name's Brooke, by the way. I know my email randomly popped up, but I'll introduce myself. Um, I'm working with the events company and I know this is strange, so we weren't technically supposed to disclose, but that's fine. Um, so basically it's in a bid to, you know, holiday projects. Um, the main idea surrounding it now is really just clean it up and decorate the city. So in the proposal, I'm not sure which ones have been forwarded to all of you, but, um, there are details sort of on what is included as far as characters, logos, that sort of thing. Um, I don't know if you have a specific concern with sort of the render or the picture, but I can try and answer best.
Are there going to be characters and logos?
Yes.
Okay, that's pretty much my question. And I wanted to ask that in public because a lot of people watch these, these meetings and I want the townspeople to be aware of exactly what we're asking for here.
Okay.
Mr. Higgins, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, I'm glad Brooke is there, uh, yeah, uh, I, I, my understanding is that, uh, the existing decorations that we have on Main Street will not be, uh, in any way, uh, changed in that when, uh, you take down your installation, that it would be exactly the same as it was before you put it up. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. So anything that is existing in the city will just be sort of in addition to that. We're not looking for any extra work on your part at all. So keep everything the way it is and, um, pending approval on our end forward with Bisbee, uh, which I hope it would, but if it does, then everything that has already been planned with the city would just stay the way it is and we would be the ones coming in and just being in addition to that.
Thank you.
Uh, Brooke, can you, uh, Ms. Giacamino, get to you just a second? Uh, Brooke, can you tell us if you know, how many cities will, will, uh, they be actually choosing to do this with?
Yep, I know that they're currently looking at five total, um, as their final sort of number. So, um, very soon, because I know installations ideally would be going up first week of December, which I don't know if it was forwarded along to you, um, as well, the team. But, um, so we are moving quickly with it, so hopefully I can get that to you guys. But I guess we wanted to see first and foremost what the cities come with. And going forward, if this is something you are all in and/or if there's any sort of problems.
Great, Ms. Giacamino?
I have a couple of questions. Um, one, how long will the lights run for once they're put up? Meaning, you know, what's the span of time?
Yeah, no worries, it's, um, most likely for three weeks. So what we're looking to do is installation on the first week of December. And then it would be taken down around New Year's. So most likely, yeah, probably around New Year's to the end of that sort of spectrum. I think we were looking at first around Christmas, but it will probably go on a couple of days after that.
So my second question is why Bisbee?
Well, we were looking, we, we had a lot of research going on small towns across America. I think the main, um, part of this campaign, what we're all trying to do here on my team, is just understanding that these big cities who don't have problems putting on extra lights and already have the funding behind them, there are all these beautiful small towns in America that especially given the year that we've all had, could really use that, um, funding and extra cheer. So that's kind of how it came about and Bisbee was one of the towns that came up in research. And, um, we just loved the look of your Main Street and wanted to work with you guys.
Thank you, anybody else? Thank you, Brooke, appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Blue Revolver Incorporated to place a holiday installation on Main Street.
Oh, second, uh. All those in favor signify by stating aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm sorry, opposed, nay, nay opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Is that Giacamino and Johns?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Johns was, did you get that, Ms. Cornado? Okay, so I believe it's five to two?
Yes.
Three.
Oh, oh, Anna was also a name.
I was muted, sorry.
Okay, four to three, okay, well, motion passes four to three. Thank you, Brooke, so much.
Okay, thank you all for your time, happy holidays.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval of an engagement letter for legal services with Gus Rosenfeld. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you. So, um, as many of you know, uh, attorney Ledbetter had provided us with the notice, um, that December fourth, I believe, will be his last day. Um, so in preparation, um, for his leaving, I did, um, reach out, um, for recommendations for, um, firms. And I started, uh, with the City of Wilcox. Um, they are using, um, Bill Sims, who's with Sims Mackin. Um, and I thought that might be a good fit for us since Kristen was already, um, familiar with some of the issues, um, here in the City of Bisbee. Um, however, upon review of the load, legal load, um, that the City of Bisbee has, um, Bill Mackin ultimately, um, wished us well, um, but indicated that he would not be able to provide us, uh, with that service. Um, I then, um, reached out to Dickinson Wright, whom he, um, indicated might be a good fit for the city. And I did have a phone conversation with them and also did receive, um, a letter of interest, an expression of interest from their firm. And then, um, lastly, um, reached out to Gus Rosenfeld. And, um, that's where I spoke with, um, their attorney, um, Mr. Estes. So, um, that is in your, that is the recommendation that I'm making, um, to the council. And, um, that's based on, um, their depth as a firm, um, both with HR and they serve other mining communities as well, um, and experience with other matters similar to what the City of Bisbee, um, is experiencing. So my recommendation, um, for future city attorney is to go with Gus Rosenfeld. So, my recommendation for future city attorney is to go with Gus Rosenfeld.
Thank you. Ms. Johns?
Hi, thank you. Just, I know all of us on the council are already aware of this, but I'd just like either Ms. Coleman or Mr. Ledbetter to explain why it wasn't necessary to put out an RFP for legal services, just for the sake of the public right now.
Sure, Leslie, I'm happy to do that. I did send a response to Fred after he had put out his Bisbee Wire Newsletter this past week. So, City Code 3.5.8 covers other types of procurement. And in paragraph E, it states that contracts for legal services, medical and dental services, appraisal services and other similar services from licensed or certified professionals may be solicited on the basis of a request for a statement of qualifications and an expression of interest. If prices for work are included in the proposals, any such contract shall be awarded on the basis of the best interests of the city and not solely on the basis of the price.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Gus Rosenfeld actually has assisted the city of Bisbee in past years on other matters. So, it's a well-known law firm, one I've worked with many, many times throughout the years. Any, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the signing of the engagement letter with Gus Rosenfeld for legal services.
I'll second that. Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes five to two. Thank you, Mr. Estes. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Look forward to working with each one of you.
Item number nine, Ms. Joelle, where are you? There you are. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker and I have other call to the public. I don't know what you want to start with.
Is the speaker on?
Yes, it's Pamela Blunt and I'm unmuting her right now. Let's see, I think she has to unmute herself as well. Pamela, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, welcome, welcome, Ms. Blunt.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I am one of many of the residents who's really saddened about the situation with the Bisbee Animal Shelter being defunded. And I am here to ask that you vote for an extension on VAS funding and that the incoming mayor, council, VAS and public input put together some kind of collaborative plan. No, just respect to city manager Coleman, but I just don't think such a decision should be at the sole discretion of one person. I know you've heard that from other people too. And several times I've heard people say that the VAS was welcome to apply for the RFP and I understand that they did and didn't include some things that were necessary. But to me, the problem is that the RFP doesn't begin to address the animal welfare of our community. The number of animals listed there really covers less than 15% of the animals actually cared for by the VAS in the last year. And it would appear that it also, they'd have to give up their, you know, their effective humane animal welfare practices because we would in fact, in effect, I think, become a kill shelter again and be giving up the spay-neuter program, which for me and for many people seems unacceptable and really short-sighted. Some small points that I saw that, I thought it was you, Attorney Ledbetter, I might be wrong. It was in a report in the Herald that, and it's been brought up before, that we shouldn't be taking care of animals in other districts as if this was a point. And my understanding is there's very few animals from other districts that have been taken care of. And the issue was that we shouldn't use Bisbee tax monies to do that, but I just wanted to point out that the FBAS raises tremendous amount of funds and there's nothing to say that tax monies actually paid for those small animals care, small number of animals care. And the RFP also rightfully asks the contractor to engage in a cooperative relationship with area rescue organizations. The VAS already has a strong network of collaborative relationships with rescue organizations in the county and state. And those jurisdictions have at times spent their monies, tax or donations on our animals. It's been small for, in all cases, when they're transported to another district for various reasons. And that type of collaboration that we need only works with reciprocity. So, we have, we have to have their backs if they're going to have ours. And there will be times when there will be an animal in our, in our shelter from another district. I'm not going to repeat, you know, what I just said. And I do realize Bisbee's financial situation is dire and you're looking for things to cut, but I don't understand how it makes sense to cut an organization that's been very successful at raising a lot of funds to subsidize what the city of Bisbee allocates for animal care services in its budget.
You're at your three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Landers, we have a number of, how many letters of the same line do we have?
A total of 22. I have two to read and there are 20 additional emails indicating the same information.
Right. Okay, please, please read the first two, yeah, thank you.
The first one from, it says Emily Rue and then also Emily Care from Ward 1. Dear Council, I'm sure you may know my thoughts on this topic by now, but I am once again writing to say that Bisbee is a city that cares deeply about animals and we must be guaranteed a taxpayer-funded animal shelter. Taxpayer-funded is the key phrase there. We pay our taxes and we, the people, not just one person, AKA the city manager, should be able to decide how we want them spent. And I and many others, whom I'm sure you're also hearing from on this issue, want them spent on compassionate care for homeless animals. The council must approve temporary emergency funding for the Bisbee Animals Shelter so that its future can be determined by the new mayor and council after December 1st. Thank you, Emily Care, Ward 1. And then I have Jennifer, oh, sorry, Jennifer Casale. The community of Bisbee cares about animals. As a member of this community, I would like to state that it is my opinion that the council should approve temporary emergency funding for the shelter so that the fate of the shelter can be determined by the new mayor and council. Thank you, Jennifer Casale.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Coronado, would you have the remaining 20 letters, emails, I'm sorry, copied and sent out to the council tomorrow?
I will, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Item number nine, discussion of possible action on a memorandum of request for temporary 90-day funding for the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. Mr. Ledbetter? This has been discussed extensively in our executive session. Do we have any questions of Mr. Ledbetter? Mr. Higgins?
I can make a motion?
All right, sir.
I move that since competitive bidding is impractical, that's not the correct word, but it's practical, practical, whatever. At the current time, it is impractical that we issue a new RFP for animal services and that we extend emergency funding to the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter in the amount of $4,999 for the next, for 30 days.
I second that.
Can I have a comment?
I'd like clarification on that wording.
Thank you.
Can I ask the specific clarification that I would like?
Please.
Um, the wording of emergency? Be omitted?
Okay, then, wha- what we're looking at then is you're asking for an amendment to a motion.
Okay. Yes.
What was that, Mr. Mayor?
She's asking for an amendment to the motion, Mr. Pollock.
Right, okay.
And specifically, Ms. Giacominio states that amendment?
The amendment that we extend the funding, not emergency, but to extend the funding through.
Okay.
I second that amendment.
All right, well, Mr. Higgins, do you accept that friendly amendment?
Oh, for God's sake. Okay.
All right. And the second, or who seconded that originally, please?
It was Councilmember Johns.
You did, Ms. Johns, okay. Ms. Coronado, I need to hear the motion then.
Okay, Mr. Higgins moved, since competitive bidding is impracticable at the current time, we issue a new RFP and extend funding to the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter for 30 days. It, I'm sorry, the funding amount was $4,999. And that was for 30 days.
Okay. And is that the extent of your motion, Mr. Higgins, versus 30 days or the acceptance of an RFP, whichever comes first?
Please.
Okay.
Whatever comes first.
Okay.
Pretty messy, but I think we got there. Ms. Coronado, to make it very clear, please read it again.
Okay. Mr. Higgins moved, since competitive bidding is impracticable at the current time, that we issue a new RFP and extend the funding to the Friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter in the amount of $4,999 for 30 days or until an acceptable RFP, RFP is accepted, whatever comes first.
I believe it would be, yes.
Sorry, I have so many scribbles now.
I believe it's or an RFP is accepted.
Okay.
Whichever comes first.
Or RFP, okay. Okay.
Okay, and we do have a second. Mr. Pollock?
No comment, it's been covered, thank you.
Sorry, sir, you lit up again there.
That's okay, I'm a shiny person.
Any other comments? Ms. Coronado, please call.
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominio?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
I would indicate that I will be voting nay, simply because that I'm somewhat hesitant that this still doesn't have a slight level of exposure to the city of Bisbee. And that as a protest, I haven't ever seen a more divisive or personal issue handled in such a way as this. And my vote will be nay, so therefore, the motion passes six to one. Item number 10. Ms. Higgins, Ms. Johns, is this item still on the table?
I'm, I move to, I don't move, I like to withdraw that item number 10, it's nine, six.
I agree.
Item number 11. Discussion and possible approval of an IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement, between the city of Sierra Vista and city of Bisbee for animal care services. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you. This IGA is for animals to be taken to the Nancy J. Brew Animal Care Center outside, well, in Sierra Vista. And the cost for the five-days intake, testing, mice for chip and vaccine would come to $115 per animal. As you'll note in, within the RFP, any animal that's not claimed within the 72 or 124 hours as required by the city code will then be turned over to an animal rescue organization and the ACO or Officer of the Law or employee of the city can help with that transfer. These are for animals that are also brought to the shelter by those same personnel.
Thank you. And this would be no cost to the city if we don't take any animals there.
It's just that. And it does not require us to take animals to that facility.
Correct. Ms. Klein, did you have your hand up? No?
I do, I've got a question for our attorney. Given that we just voted on the 30 days and going out for the RFP, is it best to table this item until we see if we get any proposals? Or how do we do this in light of what we just did?
Well, of course, that's a decision of council. And you certainly could table it. And, you know, I'm always reluctant, as you know, Ms. Klein, to weigh in and say what's best. It's your call, either is legally permissible. You could either enter into this agreement, making it effective January 1, or alternatively, or functionally January 1, alternatively, you could choose to table it.
I was just asking because the IGA is for six months.
But again, this, the IGA is only triggered, or expenses only triggered if animals are actually delivered. So then the city can control that cost and expense by non-delivery of animals if something else happened. So, the IGA would theoretically continue to exist even if there were an IRFP bidder and it would be of no cost to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
Yeah, I feel this is somewhat redundant because, you know, we are going to issue a new RFP. And I think that, you know, at that point there, we'll see what kind of responses that we get to the new RFP. So, I really feel that this IGA with Sierra Vista at this time is redundant and it should be, at a minimum, it should be tabled. Or for that matter, voted down, or voted on, but I'm okay with tableing it. So, I guess somebody needs to make a motion.
Mayor?
Who, who, Ms. Klein?
I move to table agenda item 11.
Second?
Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I seconded it.
The motion is tabled, non-debatable. All those in favor of tableing? All those in favor of tabling it signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay, nay?
Nay.
It was myself, Pollock, Hanson. Is that it?
I think it's four to three.
Four to three. Motion passes to table, four to three. Item 12, City Manager's Report.
All I had was an information piece for you at this time. And it's in the packet.
Yep, okay. Mr. Higgins, for the last time?
I move adjourned.
We have a second. We have a second, thank you. All those in favor of adjourned signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Well, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you, everybody. Please be safe.
Bye, Dan. Bye, guys.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Night.